There's a place in the Midwest, fifty miles southeast of Chicago nestled near the coast of Lake Michigan. It's a place driven by what's coming next, a place where industry is the lifeblood of its community and its pulse is gritted with sand and steel, fire and smoke. It's a city building its future together, one business, one family, and one home at a time. This is a place for makers, doers, and dreamers. It's where the global marketplace meets hometown values, where Americana isn't just a tradition, it's a way of life. Here, your experience makes the difference. With access to railroads, major waterways, and eight different highways, this is a place in motion, sending goods, services, and ideas not just across the state but across the world. And when the work ends the day's just beginning, with beaches like West Beach in the Indiana Dunes National Park, exciting hiking and biking trails like the Diana of the Dunes Dare or the BMX Track, and local treasures and exciting festivals, you'll know you're in more than just a bedroom community. From veterans of foreign wars to hometown heroes, our diversity is our strength, and we forge our future with the same flame as our steel. Oh, there's a place in the Midwest that's calling you home. The best part of Portage is what's next. The best part of Portage is you. There's more for you in Indiana. There's a place in the Midwest, fifty miles southeast of Chicago nestled near the coast of Lake Michigan. It's a place driven by what's coming next, a place where industry is the lifeblood of its community and its pulse is gritted with sand and steel, fire and smoke. It's a city building its future together, one business, one family, and one home at a time. This is a place for makers, doers, and dreamers. It's where the global marketplace meets hometown values, where Americana isn't just a tradition.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order of the Portage Planning Commission on March third, 2025. If we can all please rise to say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Mr. Secretary, can you please do roll call?
Victor Mendoza.
Here.
Melissa Widenbach.
Here.
Brent Bright.
Here.
Carissa Childers.
Here.
Sam La Boy.
Here.
Deb Ekdahl.
Here.
Denise Little.
Victoria Vasquez.
Here.
Alonso Garcia.
Here.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to the approval of the minutes for our meeting on February third, 2025. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. We now have our reports of officers and committees.
No reports.
No reports. Is there any questions about no reports from the board? Okay, thank you. We will now move to the next order of business for the election of officers and appointment of executive secretary and legal counsel. We will start with the first part with the board. Do I have any discussion or motions for president and/or vice president?
I make a motion for Denise Little to be president.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do we have a motion for a vice president?
I make a motion for Victoria Vasquez as vice president.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We now have the business of our executive secretary. Do we have a motion for our executive secretary?
I make a motion to elect Tom Cherry.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Too late. Next order of business is our legal counsel. Mr. Secretary, can you advise a bit on how that works?
Staff would recommend to make a motion for Scott McClure as legal counsel.
Thank you. Do I have a motion from the board for legal counsel?
I make a motion for legal counsel to be Scott McClure.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
We should discuss the PC member appointment to DRC. I'm not sure, this is always a tough one. DRC is during the day, during the week, so it's kind of a tough appointment. I do know that right now Denise Little has stepped in to attend those meetings, so if there's somebody else that can attend those during the day. What time are those?
Does the board have any suggestions, recommendations? Volunteers?
Denise Little.
Second. Is that a motion, Sam?
I'll make a motion to appoint Denise Little to the, what was it?
Development.
Development Review Committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That's what happens when you're not here. Next item on the agenda is our new business for a public hearing. We have two petitions on the agenda. The first one, my glasses on here, the first one is for Ladybug Laundry Company, Adam McAlpine, is that correct? Requesting a change of zoning from office commercial to C1, small, medium-scale commercial at 2852 Willow Creek Road. This is under Z-01-25. We have here Adam, I'm assuming, okay, to present your presentation.
So, I'm actually gonna go first, that's all right. The, I'm Logan Wheatrick, I own Ladybug Laundry. We're, Adam here is our civil engineer, so he's gonna break down some other things for you, but we are a well-established laundry company. We've got twelve locations throughout Indiana, primarily here in Lake Porter and La Porte Counties, and for this project, we, well, I've had my eye on Portage for a while, and we, when it comes to new locations for us, we really like to take our time and find not only communities that we can add value to, but communities that can add value to who we are as a company. We're pretty straightforward, we like to turn routine chores into exceptional experiences. So, with this, with this project we're looking at here in Portage, we chose Portage because Portage is severely underserved in the laundry market, and I could bore you with the laundry nerd details of that, but given some of our demographic data from other locations of ours, we just know that Portage is underserved. This exact location, I came across after a couple of years of just looking for where would best suit Portage, and finally, I found it. It's in proximity to housing, where people load forty, fifty, hundred pounds of clothes. They're not looking to drive real far to shopping centers where they have to walk across long parking lots. They need something where they can tote a lot of stuff really quickly to get their things done. You may be surprised to know, but we serve every demographic of people. There's stigmas that come with laundromats, and we like to break those. We don't, we serve low, middle, upper and upper-middle class, and again, laundry nerd details, I could really bore you with the exact statistics of how we serve those parts of the community. Adam's gonna break down some more things for you, but the biggest thing about what we do is where you see, I always joke, so if you watch CSI or something like that, there's always some weird thing that happened in a laundromat, right? Like, that's a stigma you get with laundry. And then this niche of an industry is something that I've really taken a hold to, because we break that stigma and we say like, we are gonna offer the cleanest, most convenient, fastest experience you can get in laundry, and I can't tell you how many times I'm at one of my locations and somebody walks in and goes, oh my gosh, I haven't been to laundry in twenty years, I didn't realize they could be like this. And Portage is just the perfect community for this. I think, I come from small-town Indiana, grew up as a farmer's kid, and community meant a lot to us, town of eight hundred people, and what I loved about Portage is, like I said, not only are we looking for something that complements our, or that we can complement the community, but like, the community can complement who we are. And I love, I love Portage's feel, I love the community you have here, the pride you have, and we wanna be a part of that. We're invested in all the communities we're in, not just in laundry, but beyond laundry. So, Adam's gonna give you, I think, a site breakdown, and then we have Matt Rossman, who's our general contractor for this project as well, will talk about some more things.
Good evening, Adam McAlpine, with McAlpine Consulting, here working on this project with Logan and Matt. This is a sketch-up rendering of what, conceptually, this building and site could look like. The design is still early on, but I think what we wanted to do, because we're here tonight to talk about a proposed rezone for this proposed use, but with that, we wanted to make sure you were aware of what we're proposing to do, so that you don't offer a rezone or a recommendation for a rezone without knowing what we're proposing to do. The site is located just on the west side of Willow Creek Road, just north of the new Big B Coffee. That's where, that's where this laundry facility is proposed. It's, the building is set off of the road, as you see, it's a bit of a, there's kind of a panhandle of property, that's where the pond and entrance drive is, and this property is set, it's 1.45 acres, the building's set back a little ways, we're going to have parking in the front and in the rear, with circulation drives around the building, proposed detention pond in the front, available, you know, sewer and water are right in the front, so it's, it's a good site for a building like this. It's nestled in between a credit union and the Big B Coffee there, it's close proximity to residential areas, it's very visible, full-access drive shown there off of Willow Creek Road, good distance away from the other drives. So that's, that's what the site looks like, and if you don't mind, I wanna just discuss what they call findings of fact, and this is in your zoning standards. This here is our application to the city that you see on your screen. So this is what we have prepared, and we've provided this to staff, met with staff, and one, this is a laundry list of adjacent properties, there are fifty-four of them that were notified, and I imagine some of them are here tonight. But part of the submittal is the findings of fact, so that we have to answer five questions. How does this tie in with Portage's comprehensive plan? So we have to provide a response to that, and we have here, I won't read it for you, but I just wanna highlight that this has been indicated. So we feel that we've, we've hit on each of these findings. The current conditions and character of structures and use in each district, again, we're touching on providing a response, I think, it's a desirable use for this particular area in the city, does not take away from the property values that are adjacent to it, and it, and it ties in well with, in our opinion, responsible development and growth within the city. Current zoning of this property is office commercial, and I can't speak for the staff, I did read their recommendation to you, but that is a particular zone and classification that, particularly after COVID, that is maybe a bit, maybe there's a lot of it. And on this particular property, that type of zoning wouldn't really fit well with the current market conditions, but it does fit very well with this personal services. So, we're proposing to go from office commercial to personal services, and that's, that's what we're here tonight, to hopefully get a favorable recommendation from you that we can then take to the city council, and then I'll pass it on to Matt.
Adam, I'm actually gonna, if you don't mind, can you pull up that rendering again before Matt goes? I tend to be really long-winded, so I cut myself short on saying some things that, like, I didn't really answer a lot of questions. Just go ahead and pull that rendering up of, no, go, yeah, one of those up there. So, logistically, here's some, here's some things about our operation for you, just to answer any questions you may have. When I say we're a laundry, we're a full-service laundry center, so that incorporates self-service laundry, where customers would come in and use washers and dryers themselves. That includes drop-off, so people, families who get back from vacation and have way too much laundry and they need someone to do it for them. And we don't, we're not in the dry cleaning business, so there's no dry cleaning or anything like that involved. Everything that gets done in our business is sustainable, economically friendly, so there's no issues there, it's all, it's all normal household stuff that happens in there. One of the reasons we chose this location is because it's got a good thoroughfare, and we have really limited traffic in and out. The egress is not a concern for us, we serve a very limited amount of people, it's not like a, you know, a quick-serve restaurant where it's just people in and out all day. People come, they stay for an hour, and then they leave, so the, I believe Willow Creek can, you know, handle that traffic, it's not, that's not gonna be a concern. You're looking at serving at maximum fifty cars a day, and that's on, you know, on your busy days, so after holidays, stuff like that. And if you look at that rendering there, you'll see we're more than just utility, like you come in and get a job done. We have a full selection of, like, vending machines with stuff that we keep stocked, and then we have a grass lot we're adding on to this, and this is just a proposed, depending on how everything ends up laying out, I'm trying to make that green space as big as possible next to laundry, where we can have things like cornhole, permanent cornhole boards out there, we'll have lawn, or sorry, we'll have tables out there, we'll have yard checkers, places where people can, like, just step outside and not just have to watch your washer spin and spin and spin for an hour. People spend a long time in these facilities waiting. We wanna give them a space to step outside, grab a cup of coffee next door, relax, chill out, play a couple games, and really just make it, like I said, more of an experience than just coming in and trying to accomplish a chore. So I'll have Matt, our GC from ICS, follow up.
Hi. So it's a little early, but I wanted to explain what you're looking at on the building there. It's just a rendering to give you a better image of what the product is gonna look like for granted this approval to change. The, our goal is to actually meet all standards, so we want as few or no variances if possible. So what we're laying out here, we've, the initial design that we put forward to Deena actually was quite different. After some review with her and her team, we realized that there would be a lot of variances required, so we went back to the drawing board and we came up with this drawing. We still have a lot of other stuff that we need to do to develop that drawing and apply for the next step, you know, if we're successful here tonight. So outside of that, if there's questions that come up, I'm here to answer them, but just wanted to make sure the context of the drawing. So there's a lot of proposed masonry on the building right, right there, but none of the materials are selected yet.
That really concludes our presentation tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So at this time, I'd like to open the public hearing for this particular topic. Give me one sec.
Public hearing needs to not open for Ladybug Laundry, is there anybody?
Here to speak for the Ladybug Laundry. Thank you very much, sir. Please step up and state your name.
Good evening, board. Good evening, Ladybug. My name is Rod, Portage, Indiana. So, you know, the first thing that stuck out to me, your personality is very vibrant, you know, very outgoing, I'm like, you know, this is the type of person that, you know, you want to represent Portage, represent the people that are gonna be in Portage, you know, in terms of a leadership, so, you know, that's very, very much appreciated. There's not a lot of, you know, laundromats here, and, you know, I think they've done a great job of, you know, describing, you know, that being said, you know, what their brand is about, and what stands out and what makes theirs different. I always go to the Google reviews, and so if I Google Ladybug, and I just pick the store closest to here, you know, most of the reviews are good. You know, the, some of the complaints, you know, generally fall into the category of things you might expect at a business, you know, the dryer doesn't dry as, you know, the way I would like it to. You know, the prices are more higher than I would like, that's one I saw across the board, but those are, those are, you know, those are okay, those aren't, you know, negative complaints, those are, you know, traditional complaints that you might, you know, expect to see a challenge. I would just share, there were a couple of people that did put negative experiences, and one thing that stuck out to me, I noticed, and there's no replies, right? So I think it's always good, like, if I see a negative review or someone expressing, hey, you know, this is a bad experience I had, when the business actually goes back on there and replies like, hey, thanks for letting us know, you know, we were able to speak with, you know, John and, you know, Rectifier, we appreciate you coming in, that, that's a, that's a demonstration of customer service. You know, we can say what customer service is, and I'm not suggesting you guys don't have great customer service, I'm just saying that coming into Portage, the great city of Portage, which I'm here to advocate for the board to approve you all to come in thinking of the highest standard, if that's something you would consider in the future moving forward, if, you know, people do give feedback, 'cause that just gives a positive sense, like, hey, you know, you can say we got customer service, but that's something, and I'm not saying you don't, that's something that says it without you saying it, but in any event, yeah, so I suggest we approve this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else here to speak for Ladybug? Go ahead and step up, sir, and state your name.
Hi, my name is Rod Hatchett, I live over on 2844 Irving Street in Portage, and I was kinda curious if it was gonna be a twenty-four-hour laundromat, or if it was gonna be like a nine to five, or nine to eight, or something like that.
We'll address that question then when we discuss it with the board. Is there anything else that you'd like to ask or state?
No, that was about it. I was just wondering, you know, to make sure there wasn't a lot of traffic in my area late at night and things, you know, bouncing around that night, you know?
Understand, thank you so much.
Sir, can you sign in? There's a sign-in sheet there with your name in it.
Thank you. Is there anybody else here to speak for?
Is there any questions?
Give me one second, dear. Is there anybody here to speak against Ladybug? Anybody here to speak against Ladybug? Anybody here to speak against Ladybug? Is there anybody here with any other comments?
Hi, I'm Julie Woods, I live around the block on Monier Street, just wondering if there's any thought or plan about, like, accessing the backside of the property from Monier Court? 'Cause that would be the only way it would affect us, is if there was gonna be traffic then coming in the backway. It's not open now, it's fenced off.
Could you repeat that? I can hardly hear you.
I was just wondering if there was any chance that they were thinking about opening up Monier Court to enter, like, a backway, instead of just coming in off of Willow Creek?
Okay, we'll, we'll put that also as one of the questions to ask. Thank you. If there isn't anything else on Ladybug, I'll close the hearing for this particular Now I'd like to open it up to the board. Does the board have any questions for Ladybug and its representatives?
I could answer that last question, there is no, no way that's connecting to that court.
For Monier?
No.
Okay.
And we have no intent, I didn't even think of that.
Do you guys use any of those chemicals used in dry cleaning mats, by chance, or no?
If you're referring to Perk, heck no. That stuff is not good. No, that's all dry cleaning related, everything we use is household tied gain.
And to go back to one of the questions from the public, is this intended to be a twenty-four-hour laundromat service, or will it have business hours?
So, yeah, so, again, without being deceiving, I'm unsure. Our model is, for instance, we recently got two new locations in Lafayette. Because we can service Lafayette from one location twenty-four hours, the other one's not. We have locations in proximity to Portage, and we live in a community that's shift work, you know, first, second, and third shift, so people work all hours of the day, and people need to do laundry all hours of the day. However, as we finish and finalize what our operational plan is, we have locations in proximity to Portage, that those who need to do laundry in the low-traffic times at night, you're within a short enough drive in low-traffic times to make it viable to do twenty-four hours elsewhere. We also have to look into, I think, our regulations, like, business operating, I know some communities don't allow that. I can say if we were to decide to open up twenty-four hours, we, it's quiet, I mean, we don't play music out, you know, we're not playing music outside, or we don't congregate outside and encourage that. We have 4K high-def cameras that cover every square inch of our property, and we're generally extremely safe business with low impact on the surrounding, you know, surrounding areas. But we don't have those plans solidified yet, whether or not, and I guess we would take advisement from the city on what their recommendations are, or even, like I said, we talk to our community members and our neighbors, and if it means being a good neighbor and we, we're causing problems, then we obviously readdress that and make sure we are respectful of the people around us.
Thank you. Thinking, forward-thinking, that you're looking for zoning, and with the intention that you will erect a building, and we have the community here wanting to know what type of facility would be in their neighborhood, with the machines that you have here, and I see they're various sizes, and the drum sizes and such, are the, is the equipment itself, are you using brands like Speed Queen, or what type of brand are you using? And if some reason that the dryer would go down, what is your turnaround time to have that operational up and running?
Sure, so we currently have over seven hundred and fifty washers in operation across our portfolio. In fact, up until a couple stores ago, I was the one doing all the repairs. And our typical, answering your question, we are using an equipment provider out of Chicago, Midwest Laundries. They, there are probably a dozen and a half equipment manufacturers in this industry. We are using what's called Figor, they are a modern, high-efficiency machine, dryers that use half the BTUs, half the gas that normal things use. Figor is produced in Spain, Speed Queen's produced in Thailand, you know, they all come from different countries, but they're, they come out of Spain, they are touchy equipment, high-efficiency. Our typical downtime is no longer than five days, so you won't see, we call it on vacation if it's broke, call it on vacation, and our performance indicator is that they're less, down for less than five days, barring a major part replacement like a bearing, which you have to disassemble the whole machine, or replace a motor, which can, the lead times on those can be a long time. But we operate over two hundred Figor machines already, so we keep parts in stock, and we can't make money if they're not running, so we keep everything running. can't make money if they're not running, so we keep everything running.
You keep sensors in, in stock then too for it?
Sensor, oh, e- everything. Well, it's different than a homestyle machine and, uh, they're commercial, it's commercial equipment, so it doesn't have, uh, it doesn't shake like your ones at home do and the sensors all go off, yeah, but they're, they're robust, uh, 15 to 20-year lifespan, um, lot of service.
And so, within our community, we have at least two laundromats that I can think of and one uses coin, one uses card.
Correct.
Which, which type of, um, point of sale would yours be using?
Absolutely. So, we don't call it a, we, in, in, in our business, we actually call it coinless. Um, it's not card, but, or, it's not card because people think you just use a credit card. So you can use cash, credit, or EBT with our s- system as well as a, a phone pay. Um, you can still use cash, but i- instead of putting quarters in a machine, you put quarters on a proprietary card, which we can always refund back to the customer if they don't want to keep their card. And so you, so you put a $20 bill in, instead of getting 80 coins, you get one card and you tap the machines you want to use to spend that money. So, yeah, we do, we do use, uh, a coinless system because nobody wants to spend 40, spit, put 44 quarters in your biggest machine.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the Board?
Uh, yeah, Juan, is there going to be some type of barrier around the retention pond?
Adam, I think you can speak to that about the elevation of the retention pond.
So that's shown in blue, but that will not be a wet bottom pond. That'll be grass. So 99% of the time, it'll just be a lawn with a gradual slope. Only time you'll see rain in it is when we've had a major rainstorm and then it will be gone in two days. So, it looks pretty blue, I suppose. But, um, but, and, and to answer your question, no, there's no intention of putting any sort of barrier around it unless something like that's required, but to my knowledge, I think that's not a, it's a requirement on a wet pond, dry bottom pond. Sorry. Yep, that was, that's all.
Okay.
Now you did mention that you had security cameras as well?
Yes.
So, is that, um, talking about security, is that something also, uh, a, a plan set in place for the doors? Like, if, for instance, again, I'm forward-thinking, because if we approve this and a building is erected, um, is there like last call, final call and our door is locked on the inside and people can't come in, or what can our community expect from this building?
Sure. And, and that's all up to how we, again, how we redefine what our operational hours are going to be and how we're going to take care of that. Generally speaking, um, you have a last wash, which is an hour and a half before the doors lock, but the doors, we don't run, none of our current stores lock the doors without an employee there. So we're attended, we have people there who are taking care of the facility, cleaning all day, processing laundry, and they will lock the doors on their way out. So we don't do auto locks because it causes problems. I mean, they just, they, they fail or people are out in the parking lot and the doors lock and they can't get in, so we like to have, you know, we, we, we employ, uh, over 40, 40, uh, full-time jobs in our company because people matter to us as a company and we like to have, and, and they matter as customers. You don't want to walk in and not have somebody to talk to and help you with things. So, if we're going to lock the doors at night, there's going to be somebody there turning the key.
Thank you. Now, is there parking behind the building as well or just in the front with this diagram?
I- in the rear as well.
Okay. And will they be able to enter from those back doors or those service doors?
So if you go, um, to the side, to the, yeah, there you go. So we will have one glass entrance door, um, that's the south end, um, that will go into the lobby. So any customers, you can assume that, um, it'll be employee parking a- as you're viewing it on the left-hand side, which is the north, that will be employee parking and most customers will congregate, obviously, in the front and when the front is consumed, they will come to the, uh, r- right rear and enter the lobby through the side door. If you wanted to pull up that other rendering of the floor plan, you'll see. So, if, the, the, the bottom of this picture is your main entrance. On the left-hand side, you'll see a side entrance to access from the back, um, just because the way we want our utilities to lay out and everything. One, you open, the store is open when you walk in and they have a, a, a rear entrance from the side there.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the Board?
I have a suggestion to the Board. If we go ahead and send a favorable recommendation to make the change from OC to C1, I would suggest that we remove on the uses, because we've done this before on other, in other aspects, that we remove car wash and gas station from the list of uses.
So do you want to make that a motion then?
While we're moving forward? I'll make a motion that we send a favorable recommendation to the common council, um, with the recommendation that we remove, or is it contingency, that we remove car wash and gas station from the list of uses for the property.
Second that motion? Is there any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carried. Much, sirs.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Mr. Secretary, should we have a roll call on that before we move on to the next order of business? Okay. For matter of clarity? Okay. Just do a formal roll call on that motion.
So on, on Z dash 01 dash 25, Ladybug, laundromat, Victor Mendoza?
Yes.
Melissa Widenbach?
Yes.
Brent Wright?
Yes.
Carissa Childers?
Yes.
Sam Laboy?
Yes.
Dev Ekdahl?
Yes.
Victoria Vasquez?
Yes.
Alonso Garcia?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion now officially carries. All right. Next up, we have M dash 01 dash 25, Karen Levandowski, 3693 Heinz Street, Portage, seeking plan commission approval to place a five-foot vinyl PVC fence in the front yard in Preston Trails located in Airport Crossing, planned unit development. Thank you very much. Come on up.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay.
Okay, so, thank you. Ms. Levandowski? What? So, um, are we right? Are we, are we good? Everybody got, okay. So, go ahead, the floor is yours.
Okay, hi, thank you. Uh, my name is Karen Levandowski and in July of 2024, I purchased a property in Preston Trails. Um, I'm at 3693 Heinz Street in Portage. Um, in about mid-January of 2025, I pursued looking into getting a fence. I will say that my property is considered a corner lot, so when I brought the fence company out to, you know, go over with me what cost would be and what I need to do and staying with my HOA guidelines, which is either a five-foot PVC white fence or a five-foot aluminum fence, so I opted to pursue a PVC fence. So the way my lot is structured, and I'll go into that and I'll take you through these pages, but anyway, so we met and we talked about what I would need to do being a corner lot, which was all new to me, never heard of this before, but, um, the way my house is situated, um, the way that he explained it to me is I would have to build my fence from the, um, northeast corner of my house and the southeast corner of my house and nothing really going much south or north, but then go back, just like a regular fence. So, um, he told me that what I should probably look into and pursue is a variance and the variance is only for 16 feet or two eight-foot panels off the side of the, um, house. So if you look at page four, this page, so this is my lot. In yellow is what would be just the regular fence, no variance. In red is the variance, so it's coming off the southeast corner of my house and only going out 16 feet. That's it. This, all this other area through here remains open. I'm not extending it out this way, I'm not extending it up this way, I'm still coming off the corner of the house, but I just need that extra 16 feet and there's a couple reasons why. And I'll explain that. The next map is a little bit of a better picture where you can see the, this is the variance area and then this is just the regular fence area. Again, this is the southeast corner of my house, this is the northeast corner of my house, and I am not encroaching on any of this space here or th- over here. And this is the sidewalk over this way. So you come down, um, Mason and then it turns, it curves into Heinz. Does that make sense so far? Okay. So really, all I'm looking to do is extend this for three we- reasons primarily. And those three reasons, I only got my notes, are, um, and doing my research, I actually drove around properties to see what corner lots look like, how they did their fencing. And I picked the Lennar property on Airport Road, which is just up from me, um, just north of me. I always call it Brookside or Brookstone, I'm not sure. And every place I went and I saw corner lots, n- all of them had their structures for their gate incorporated into like a, like what would be a variance. None of them ever came at the back of the house and went back. They all s- had to have had a variance to come out because otherwise, if I don't do that, then my, my fence going from the south to the back, southeast corner back, my gate is just going to be stuck in the middle of the fence. So I want the 16 feet to create the gate, so you can open the gate and then the other eight feet will just kind of, you know, kind of wrap it up, so to speak. So, that's one of them and aesthetically, it will just look better. It will. Otherwise, it's going to be a gate stuck in the middle of the fence. It's just going to be kind of strange. So then, in addition to that, the south end of my property, where I want this extra 16 feet, is level. Everything going east off the property and north, it slopes. So the gate would be on a solid, level surface and then in addition, I want to take advantage of at least some extra of the, extra of the su- southern sun because I want to have my elevated vegetable garden there, so I could get that and then my beds, which will be elevated, will be level too. Otherwise, everything will be tilted. And then thirdly, that extra 16 feet outside the gate and wanting to do my produce, I have a dog, we could use extra space. That's primarily it. There were some concerns that were addressed, um, by a neighbor and I did my own little studies on that and because I only have an iPad, I can't show you the video, but I walked the property and I drove the property and every time that I went around the corner, my fence is set way back. Any car coming around that corner will never even see any future playground, which is down the road and across the street. It's not till you get past my fence, even most of my house, and you turn onto Heinz, do you start even seeing a future playground. It's not there right now. So I know that was a concern. Outside of that, that's really all I'm trying to do, so, um, hopefully, oh, I wanted to share this with you too, I'm sorry. So this is my property and the pink dot right here, this would be page seven, is where the fence would end. So it extends from this point to this point and then back in, in its normal line to the end of the property. And page eight, you can, it's a little bit of a better picture. Again, this is the southeast corner of my house. This fence will come up to about this point and then, of course, go back. This whole area is still very open. Nobody would have any obstruction when they drive around the corner. There was some fear that, that, that people wouldn't see people going to the playground. That's just not true. That's not going to even be an issue at all. So I hope I can, I've addressed that part of it and when you look at the diagram of, really, this one, it's, you can see, and this is just my little drawing here, I can't really tell you what 16 feet is, this is all still very open. So if you come down this street and you turn on, um, Mason, this is all still open and it's not till you turn here on Heinz and this playground's going to be way over here. So this is not going to obstruct anybody at all, for any reason. It's a very small, minimal extension from what I can see and other things that I've looked at in different neighborhoods. And then, um, these are just pictures, like nine, this would have to be a variance because you have to come off the back of the house. That's what I was told for Portage. So this, no issue. So I know it can be done and I don't know, I mean, it's a different subdivision, but, and again, this is the other side of their house. So it's only the house with the, that the, um, that side lot, that side area is considered front yard to Portage. Who knew? And then another one, again, comes right off and these are coming off the front and the way it's been told to me, I can only come off the back and go straight back. So I'm just giving you like picture examples. Um, this is another one and there, these extensions are much further than, you know, And there, these extensions are much further than, you know, what I have, but... I'm not trying to be greedy and eat up all the, that side of the property, I just want a little bit. And then, of course, this is the fence that I will have. It's a white PVC fence, and... Oh, that's just the affidavit. So that's, in a nutshell, that's all I'm trying to do. I don't know if that was very clear, if you have any questions.
Thank you, thank you very much. So, at this point, we'll open up the public hearing for M-01-25. Public hearing is now open. Is there anybody here to speak for the PVC fencing? Thank you, come on up, state your name.
Good evening again, board. Uh, my name is Rod, Portage, Indiana. You know, I'm, I'm gonna share my perspective, and my perspective is a little different as to why we should absolutely, in my opinion, support, um, you know, this particular, uh, this particular item. And I've always said, you know, the public likes to see the city work with the people, just in general. You know what I mean? Like, not causing hurdles for the people, but being there to work with and for the people. So that's, that's a moral that, you know, I start with. But I'm gonna tell you from my perspective, um, and it's not about PCP, if that was the correct term, we should absolutely support this. Cause this right here is a mom. This is a mother right here. This young lady reminds me of my mom. My late mother Judy, who was a teacher, an amazing, lovely lady that raised me. And this young lady reminds me of my mom. She reminds me of my mom. She's up here speaking, she's up here presenting, she's up here exhibiting intelligence. And we should absolutely support the mamas. And I mean that. I mean that. That's, that's, this, this is a mom.
I'm a dog mom.
A dog mom, a mom. And I believe, and, and, and my perspective is, just for that reason, this board should absolutely support. Now, she mentioned, and first of all, she's being transparent, you know, bringing in information that she didn't have to disclose about, um, you know, a, a, a neighbor or whatever with, you know, potential issue. She's being transparent and honest, as you would expect a mom to be. I don't know if there's someone here on that neighborly side, cause I'm thinking, well, if they're not here, it couldn't have been too much of an issue, but, um, you know, so I, I, I say absolutely for that reason. We don't, we don't, we don't want to not support the great moms in Portage, you know, bought, you know, property here, and that's my reason. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else here to speak for the fencing? Is there anybody else here to speak for the fencing? Is there anybody here to speak against the fencing? Is there anybody else here to speak against the fencing? Anybody else here to speak against the fencing? Saying none, I'll close the public hearing now.
So, as, as part of the, um, the against, I received a letter. Did you all have an opportunity to read the letter and the petition? Uh, did you all, did you all have an opportunity? Okay, then I'll enter that into the records as read. Where did that come from? Uh, so, that letter was written by Alyssa Kursoff and Jerome Golden. And as far as additional petition, there was a petition signed here with seven additional residents against the, the fence. I also received one this evening, after the meeting started. Uh, this is from a Mark and Kathy Puchalski. Hopefully I read that properly. They said they did not receive the notice of this meeting until now, March 3rd. It was post-March February 18th. We feel that less than two weeks from the mailing to the meeting is not enough time for us to respond. We strongly object to the fence in the front yard of 3693 Heinz Street. And that's Mark and Kathy Puchalski, 3684 Curran Street.
Can I make a comment to that, or no?
Um, yeah, we're closed.
Yeah, we're closed.
Yes.
Oh, okay. Um, it was brought to my attention, which is just so odd to me, but, um, I initially sent out certified notice to Lennar Corporation in Illinois, because when I went to the GIS map and I had to go to each of the 10 properties, it said Lennar. So I sent out one certification. And then, like, seven, six, seven days later, I was like, I had a weird feeling, I went back and noticed that in the GIS, GIS map that I was supposed to go to, it posted all the owners' names. I don't know any of these people. I only know the, I've only talked to my neighbor just to the north of me, and then my neighbor right behind me. But anyways, so I went ahead and spent the $99 to resign certifications out, because I didn't want that to mess me up.
Well, staff can verify that notification was done per state law, so that was done.
Right, okay.
I can't control if somebody's not there to receive the certified letter.
Yeah, and that's not my point, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna get to that, so, no, I appreciate that. So then, um, I found out that there was a meeting to discuss my fence, but I was not invited to the meeting. So all the homeowners apparently met. They had no idea what I was doing, because they didn't invite me, so I could never explain it to them. So, the next, and I didn't know about this meeting, I knew nothing about it. So the next day, an individual came over, and he was like, you know, this fence, you know, you're ruining our neighborhood, we don't want this, you can't do this. I'm like, well, I can do it, my HOA is allowing me to build this fence. I only want to extend it 16 feet. Believe me, if I would have known this would have caused so much strife, I would have never pursued this. So, um, he then said, well, maybe you should just get a three-foot fence. And I'm like, well, no, I'm not gonna get a three-foot fence, I'm gonna get a five-foot fence, with or without the variance, it doesn't matter, I still can get one with the HOA, and that's already approved. So I was, so I think they had it in their mind that I was gonna build this massive fence all around my property in the front yard, because they don't realize that, like I didn't, that a side, which is our side lot, is still considered a front yard in Portage. So there were all these assumptions made, nobody ever addressed it with me. Had they invited me to that meeting, I could have perfectly explained it, and this would have been a done deal. That's, that's, that's the truth. So I don't know, that's, that's entirely on them, I guess.
Thank you for that additional insight.
I mean, I am, I was very disappointed, and a bit hurt by that.
Thank you. So now I'll open up discussion with the board. Does the board have any questions regarding the fence, or comments?
What kind of dog do you have?
A Westie. I was gonna sell ya and give you a picture of her, I can do that on my iPad, but I don't know if that's gonna buy me any brownie points. Just a little Westie, she's two. She's only known an elevated living environment. So she needs a fence, she needs a yard.
Are there any other questions or comments from the board? Do I have a recommendation, favorable or not?
I make a motion that we send a favorable recommendation to City Council to approve the fence.
No, this would be an approval from the board. Yep.
Do you want to amend your motion?
Yeah, this, because this is a plan development, it, instead of going to the BZ, it's Plan Commission. Yeah, so it's, it's basically approving or turning down.
Okay, I make a motion to approve, um, the five-foot PVC fence at 3693 Heinzie Street.
Second.
Any discussion? There was a second, Mr. Cherry. Brent. Any discussion from the board? Mr. Cherry, can you take roll call?
Victor Mendoza?
Yes.
Melissa Widenbach?
Yes.
Brent Wright?
Yes.
Carissa Childers?
Yes.
Sam La Boy?
Yes.
Deb Ekdahl?
Yes.
Victoria Vasquez?
Yes.
Alonzo Garcia?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
I'm sorry, what?
You're approved.
Oh, thank you, thank you very much. I'll get out of here, I know you have somebody. I appreciate it. Just FYI. That's not a very, that's not very clear. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I just have a little moment here, as we have a changing of the guard. All right, moving on to new business, we have, we have RCJJ Development LLC, care of Chris Salatas from Lake Shore Drive Cedar Lake, seeking a secondary plat approval for 34 lots in Bauer Farms Phase 1 under S-02-25. Good evening.
Good evening. Let's see if this works easily again. There we go. So we are seeking final plat for Phase 1B, which is 34 lots at the south end of Viceroy. As you can see pictured here, uh, this is the very southeast corner of the overall project area, which you can kind of see in this map here. This little hatched area is the, um, area that is being final platted right now. We've got a staff recommendation, whoop. That had, um, I don't know, Tom, you want to read this off, or I can just do it? Perfect. Um, the staff recommendation was to approve the Phase 1B of Bauer Farms, consisting of 34 lots contingent upon three items, completing all bonding requirements with Sandy McDaniel's. Provide a letter from the surveyor indicating that all corner lots have been marked. Once the corner lots have been installed, a verification letter is required. That has already been completed as of Friday. And number three, installation of asphalt turnaround at the end of Viceroy Street on the west and east side of the outlots for emergency vehicles. And it says, please see attached, and here is a photo of an example of a turnaround. Uh, it's what we kind of just call a hammerhead. It allows, you know, emergency vehicles, garbage trucks and the like to turn around until this very southern road ends up going through at some future development. We would expect that farm, which is not owned by us, to develop sometime in the future. And then it would just be a continuation. And then I believe we've had discussions with Great Lakes Engineering on, um, lowering some stormwater structures. We have scheduled with John Hannan to go out into the field and inspect each structure and get a punch list of how far he thinks that those need to be lowered. Uh, I believe we have kind of agreed via email that those items should be bonded, and we would wrap the, um, first contingency, the bonding requirements, which we have those numbers from Sandy McDaniel's. We would add in the hammerhead turnaround at the end of the Viceroy Street, and the lowering of the stormwater structures into that bond, get it approved. Uh, we cannot install the hammerhead turnaround at this time, because the asphalt plants have not opened. We expect those to open sometime at the end of April, early May, so we can start asphalting. And then, similarly with the, um, stormwater structures, just would have to wait until the ground becomes a little more firm to be able to go out there and do that work. Outside of that, I think that's about it.
Thank you. So, now we're at the, um, seeking secondary approval from the board. So I now present it to the board to ask if there's any questions, comments. Ready's good?
I can confirm that, um, they have been in contact with the city engineer regarding some water issues and structure heights, so that is being worked on.
I'll just reiterate, um, so, we spoke with the developer, I'm sure you've been in the emails. Uh, we, we plan to meet on site and inspect the drainage structures, swales, and the backyards. Um, I'm aware, in Phase 1A, there were some issues regarding drainage offsite. Uh, so it's my understanding that any incomplete work will be bonded before a final plat is signed. And that's about it.
Correct.
Thank you.
And it's my understanding that the bond would be approved at the Board of Works meeting.
So at this time, I'm seeking a motion for a, an a secondary plat approval from the board.
I'll make a motion that we approve Phase 1B of the Bauer Farm.
Second.
We have a first and a second, any discussion? Mr. Cherry, can you take roll call?
Victor Mendoza?
Yes.
Melissa Widenbach?
Yes.
Brent Wright?
Yes.
Carissa Childers?
Yes.
Sam La Boy?
Yes.
Deb Ekdahl?
Yes.
Victoria Vasquez?
Yes.
Alonzo Garcia?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So I've got, I'll make this quick, I promise. Uh, I've got something under other. Uh, it's gonna be M-02-25. And procedurally, uh, the start of a comprehensive master plan starts with you as an approval to do that plan. Uh, the last one was done in 2009. Uh, we're planning on doing one this year. These should be done every five to 10 years, but with Portage's growth, or any city's growth, it should be closer to five years, so we're a little overdue on this. Uh, Whitman, um, out of Portage is gonna be handling the master plan. And I just need a, um, a motion to either approve or turn down the, the master plan, the completion of the master plan. This is for the whole city, so, it's a complete master plan.
I make a motion to approve the complete master plan for the city of Portage. We got a first and a second on the floor, is there any discussion?
What are we voting on?
Just saying that as a Plan Commission, you are in favor of doing the plan, the comprehensive master plan.
We're not approving whatever comes out, we're just approving that one...
The completion of one.
The one is being presented to us in the future.
Correct, and, and actually, you'll be involved if, if you desire in that master plan. It's a long process, so, and, and we invite as many people to be involved with public... So, and we invite as many people to be involved with public, our Plan Commission, everybody. So you're just saying, yes, I want this done, as a board.
So we have a first and a second. Melissa, second. So we have a motion to move forward with a green light of the master plan. Okay. Mr. Cherry, can you give us a roll call?
Victor Mendoza?
Yes.
Melissa Widenbach?
Yes.
Brent Wright?
Yes.
Carissa Childers?
Yes.
Sam LaBoye?
Yes.
Deb Ekdahl?
Yes.
Victoria Vasquez?
Yes.
Alonzo Garcia?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. So is there any other business to present in front of this board? Saying, saying none, do we have a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn. Second?
Second. Second. Someone?
Second.
Brent? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. [music]